Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. Before we get started, would you all stand and let's salute the America flag, please?
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. And just for housekeeping, we are missing a member of the board, Mr. James Mackey. He'll be with us for the next select board meeting. So with that being said, why don't we jump into the first scheduled item for seven o'clock? It's pole position four, 820 Shoshine Street. Do we have a representative from National Grid? I see Paulo on the WebEx.
Yes, hello, Paulo. This is Paulo Pata. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, my friend.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, we were asked by the town to relocate Pole 84 on Shoshine Street and Woodbridge Street because they're adding a sidewalk there. So because of that, we need to move the pole about seven feet toward 820 Shoshine Street. So that's why we're here petitioning for this pole tonight. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Okay, just first, before we open up, I'm sorry. This is my fault. This is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. I mean, actually, it's not a roll call vote because we're all present. So why don't we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to waive that. So what we're going to do is we'll describe the pole position. We're going to open up in case there's any residents who would like to speak. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and then we'll bring it back to the board. So with that being said, any other, why don't we open it right up to the board for questions and concerns? Astronik?
I do not have any questions or concerns, Mr. Chairman, and I believe this is for the fire station. Is that correct?
Sidewalk on Shoshine Street.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Only to confirm, I think I heard the representatives say correctly, this is being done at the request of the town because of the sidewalk installation. Is that accurate, sir?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, just for the purpose of the minutes, I want to acknowledge that Ms. Wellman recused herself from this particular matter.
Okay, cool. I was just going to get to that. So, and again, just for the residents, what always happens in this particular case is National Grid puts a packet, it goes through a series of checks and balances, including folks on our side for the residents. And what we do is we send it to the direct abuddists in case the pole, as an example, is in their yard or we have to put wires under the street and all that happy stuff. So with that being said, I do have questions, but I do believe one of the members of the board, literally, it's her property. So what I'm going to do is kind of pause here and why don't we open it up to the residents or abuddists for conversation, questions? Name an address for the record, please.
Jane Wellman, 820 Shoshine Street.
Thank you.
I'm accusing myself as a board member so I can speak on this matter. I wanted to just note that National Grid did a great job of communicating with me about moving this pole. It also requires an easement on my property to support, to run the guy wire to support that particular pole. And I also wanted to acknowledge the responsiveness of the town, particularly the Health Department, who came out immediately when I called them to look at the site so that it would not impact my septic system. So all in all, everybody was tremendously professional and responsive and great to work with, and so I support the petition. That's worth it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. Okay, at this point, any other additional residents or direct abuddists? Okay, seeing none, would I like to have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll close the public hearing, so why don't we, why don't we bring it back to, any questions, concerns from the board?
No.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the pole relocation petition number 303-411-46, as requested.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass it unanimously, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Paulo, thank you.
No problem.
All right, 7:05, perfect timing, 7:10, that's okay. So we have another pole petition. This one is a new development on Pond Street. So Paulo, are you going to be the man to represent this line item as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so just describe, please, what you're seeking for the approval from the board, please?
Yes, developer is building five new homes on the corner of Pond Street and Pine Street. And because we don't have the poles necessary to provide electrical power to these new homes on Pond Street, we are adding four new additional poles to serve each customer. And that's why we need that, those poles. Also Verizon is a part of this, so you know, for their internet and phone service, they also require these poles. Does anybody have any questions for me about them?
I'm going to pause quick. I'm batting a thousand, I forgot to wave, do I have a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Roll call vote, I mean, I'm going to say that all night, roll call vote. What's the pleasure of the board? Yea, yonae?
Aye.
Thank you, right, it's going to take a little bit, a little adjustment from the WebEx. Okay, so same deal here, this is a public hearing, so why don't we, questions, concerns from the board?
I have none.
Mr. Johnson?
No questions, just a comment in general to the representative from National Grid. We're adding four poles to the town's inventory. I know we've asked in the past, and I'd encourage you to take back to your team the request that unused or duplicate poles, double poles that we might have in town would be an appropriate thing to maybe reduce the number overall if there are any that can be addressed in conjunction with our approval to add four. So if you can consider that, take that back to your colleagues who might be involved with that aspect of your pole management, it would be appreciated.
Definitely, I know who I can reach out to in response to that. I know we have what we call a double pole program where they keep track of all these double poles and we're working on removing the excess poles necessary, but I will reach out to that person and let them know how the board feels about progressing that as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Wellman?
I have no questions.
I have no questions as well. Why don't we, same exact deal here, do we have any, with any, any open microphone for the abuddists or for any residents? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion, I have a second. How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 4-0. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the petition as requested. It's petition number 303-51220.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you very much, Paulo, I think we're done at this time, correct?
Yes, correct, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Paulo, very much.
Have a great night.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along. So at this point, we have the residence section, so with any residents, I have a funny suspicion that we might have residents to speak potentially. I do have something on the agenda, it's called a 40B presentation, and I kind of want to just highlight that quickly. So here's the deal. So we had, I think it was July 11th, we had the Hanover group come in to plant the seed for the community as far as what they're going to, again, plant the seed because it's because it was a talk of the town of what they potentially want to build up in the Ames Pond area. So again, it was just to plant the seed with the community and get the ball rolling. So in lieu of that meeting, Mr. Montori, keep me honest, the Hanover group decided to do a 40B, direct 40B as to oppose to a lip, so essentially, we call a lip, let's call it a friendly 40B versus a 40B going direct to the Commonwealth. So it's my understanding that the Hanover group has chose just to do a 40B, essentially going direct to the Commonwealth, and we will be involved. So the reason why I put this on the agenda for item number seven is simple. The town is going to secure a lawyer that specializes in the 40B stuff because it's, you know, it's very, there's a lot of information out there. So kind of a good news thing where we're going to get a lawyer, secure a lawyer for Tuxbury, to kind of work with us, the residents, and to work with the Hanover group to say, hey, at the end of the day, here's our list of concerns, thoughts, whatever, from safety to sewer to water pressure, the list goes on and on and on, because not only the director abuddists, but residents have been pretty thorough to this point to get in front of it. So anyway, so we're going to talk about the process or the strategy from A to Z and to see how we as a community fit in those different areas so that we can document, meet with those folks, you know, and listen, if we ask for 100 things and we get 10, I just use as an example to residents, we'll have to take it. So we'll prioritize which are the most important to the abuddists coupled with the residents as a whole, because this project is pretty significant and it does impact, you know, 30,000 plus residents and on top of the director abuddists we know on Cotigan and Outlook and other streets up there. So, but I just wanted to preference that in case residents wanted to speak tonight on behalf of that, because I know we know it's a very hot button for the abuddists as well as the community. So, but at this time, I'll pause. So outside of that, other, open mic for residents at this time. Okay, and I'm very generous when it comes to the microphone, so if we do the 40B process, I will entertain some questions. So I'm going to break the rules as always. So with that being said, what we're going to do is, if there's no residents, what we're going to do is move to boards and committees appointments. We have Julia Boniva, and she was part of the committee. I think she maybe went a little bit late and delayed, but the bottom line is she submitted the application, she's sworn in, so I think this is a formality, she's already on the committee as a vice chair, I believe?
Yes, and she was on, she has been on for many years.
Okay, very, just the formality, so Ms. Julia submitted. So that being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Julie Boniva to the Public Events Committee.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please, what's that?
With gratitude.
With gratitude, always gratitude, remember, all the committees and volunteer work. So with that being said, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, moving right along, we have a Housing Authority tenant member term to be notified, five-year term to expire June 30th, 2026. So, Mr. Montori, keep me honest here, where we have Mrs. Wright, and I think we actually appointed her for three years as opposed to five years. So again, this is yet another formality where we just have to make just a little audible as a board and recognize for Ms. Wright for a five-year term as opposed to a three-year term, so simple stuff, right?
Correct. After the board made the appointment at previous meeting, Town Council informed me the term should have been five years instead of three, so we're just updating the term.
Okay, I blame me, I think that was my motion, so, all right, we'll do a self-correction. So what's, with that being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I would like to adjust Ms. Wright's appointment to a five-year term expiring June 30th, 2026 for the Housing Authority tenant member.
Thank you, Ms. Tronik, I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous, all right. Next on the agenda is Burners Great Legs 5K race. And for those who have been on the board for a little bit, and just for the residents and the audience, this one's simple. I do believe this 5K race has been going on for quite some time, I almost think it's 30 or 40-plus years. So the bottom line is 90% of the 5K race is in Lowell, and it does touch on Clark Street and Tuxbury. So in order to approve the race, this is all standard stuff, where we get our packet, they work with our town leadership and public safety to say, hey, Tuxbury, we're going to have a race. And this particular Burners Great Legs race, it's for homeless folks, to raise money for homeless folks and for house in law. So all good stuff, and every, all our paperwork, and believe it or not, it's very significant just to pass this race, the, I think the only thing that we need to do, Mr. Montori, is they're going to have a policeman, I think, and we are also going to have a cop. The race starts at seven o'clock on, I believe it's August 19th, a little bit weird, but again, they've been doing this for 40 years, so for me, again, this is a finale, formality. But the bottom line is we are going to have representation up in Clark Street there with an officer. So, and I know Mr. Johnson and Ms. Tronik have been on the board, and, you know, I know you guys are fully familiar with this request as well typically, so. Questions, comments from the board?
I have one question.
I do have just one question.
Sure.
I noticed that our safety officer, Jenny Welch, put together a very detailed email to the person organizing this. I just wanted to make sure that all those things were satisfied because there may have been something that I'm missing, but I just want to make sure that they addressed her comments.
You can make that contingent in the motion that the safety officer's concerns are all met as part of the approval.
I'm sorry, Ms. Tronik, one more time, just.
Sure. The safety officer, Jenny Welch, had a list of concerns that I did not see answered yet. It might be a timing issue. I do know that we're familiar with this, I know that they're very well organized. Again, it might just be a timing, but I want to make sure that all of those things that the safety officer put forward in her email are addressed. Some of them are to the police officer and things like that.
Okay, I thought we had a police officer locked and loaded, but that's, so you'll have to just go back to Ms. Wellman.
Just make a contingent upon police, safety department being satisfied with all the issues.
Okay, very good. Mr. Johnson, Ms. Wellman?
I'm also.
My only, my question was similar to Ms. Tronik's, and I just wanted to make sure that the organization was going to be paying a detail officer, I wanted to have a detail officer. And I thought that Jenny, Officer Jenny Welch's response was completely detailed, and their organizational materials and safety plan were also exceptional. That was my only question.
Good deal, yeah, I think that they have 200 racers, they're going to, the max is 300, so anything over 200 requires, you know, a police officer in Lowell, so, okay, all good. All right, very good. With that being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the race on August 19th at 7:00 PM, contingent on Jenny Welch's, the police safety officers' concerns being met and being a paid police detail for Burna Great Lakes.
Very good, I have a motion. Very good, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, 4.0. All right, next order of business, easement, 1069 Soul Street, easement, 1069 Soul Street. All right, Mr. Montori, keep me honest here, there was a lot of paperwork, I think you almost had to be a lawyer to decipher what we may or may not vote on. So with that being said, maybe you just want to give some insight to the board, please?
Sure. This is a, National Grid's looking for an easement to install power lines from the solar farm at Sutton Brook landfill across an access road to connect to the grid. So they're looking for the town, who's the owner of the closed landfill that we took by tax title many years ago, to grant the easement. So I'm looking for the board to approve this easement tonight, sign the document. I'm going to, I will hold the document and not submit it to National Grid until I get the final okay from the attorney for the, for the executive committee for the Sutton Brook landfill is just reviewing and finalizing for me that during the closure and consent agreement for the landfill that the town has authorization to grant the easement. Usually we'd go to town meeting, but since this was a superfund site, closed landfill or consent agreement that had language in there about granting easements and access, we felt we were okay to move forward, but I want that double checked before I give them this final document. But just to keep things moving, if the board could approve it tonight, we'll, I'll finalize all the paperwork with the attorney over the next week.
Okay, so I'll open up the board for questions. So the bottom line is simple, we have a solar farm up there, is this vital, AKA we have to put this in as a town to get the benefit of the solar farm? Is that really the bottom line?
It is, so the solar farm is generating two revenue sources. One is lease of the land, which goes to the executive committee for the Sutton Brook landfill. We're part of that executive committee. It helps reduce the annual maintenance costs, which we pay 24% of that cost, so that will help our costs on an annual basis. The other is we will receive approximately $39,000 a year payment in lieu of taxes for the solar farm that will go directly to the town, that will help offset the costs of the annual maintenance. So the town does get a direct benefit. We developed the RFP and selected Syncoffer, who is the solar company. This is just the last piece to get them connected to the grid.
Okay, all right, very good. Let's open up the board for questions. Astronik?
I just have one question. If our legal team says that what we, the action that we're not taking tonight, this will come back before us.
It'll come back before you, for town meeting. I may put an article on town meeting just as a precaution for October, and we may work out some temporary easements until we get permanent easements, but they're working. The attorney, Bonnie Humpf, is on, looking at that as we speak.
Great, I really applaud your efforts to keep this moving so that we don't get behind the eight ball while we figure out the legal ease, so I appreciate that. Just wanted to make sure that we're crossing our eyes and not tease, I appreciate it. Thank you, I have no other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Tronik. How about, Mr. Johnson? No questions? Very good. Ms. Wellman?
I just wanted to confirm that the easement is along this access road that goes toward the lobes that are there for the Sutton Brook.
It does, it's an access road that was actually recently built to get access there. There are two access roads, one is owned privately, this one was built specifically by the, by Syncoffer, the developer, to get to the lobes.
Yep, okay. No, I have, I have no further questions, I think it's a wonderful way to use this land since it was put out of commission through pollution and so forth. This remediation is a tremendous use for what's there and will be useful to the residents by reducing these costs, so thank you.
Ms. Wellman, like I said, there was just a lot of context, I don't think we approved one of these in quite some time, so there's a lot of paper, fancy, 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 fancy paperwork here. And, Mr. Montori, just to confirm, I don't think there's any landowners there, like we talked about pole petitions this evening where we have residents and direct abuddists, but I think this one is, not, not much is up there, correct?
No, no, there's the farm which is, you know, away from this a bit, and it's really the landfill itself.
Okay, okay, very good, I, all right, very good. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to authorize the town manager to execute the grant of easement as he deems appropriate upon advice of legal counsel.
Can I jump in on that, just?
Please, Mr. Montori.
Could you authorize the board to approve it and authorize me to submit it once I have final legal approval?
I'll consider that.
And I'll pass this around for signature.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion.
As amended.
Okay, I have a second. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye carries 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Montori.
There are two papers to sign. Execute?
Yep. All right, this brings us to item seven. This is a, this is what I talked about earlier, this is the 40B, this is the 40B process presentation. Again, the whole concept here, an idea is to, we secured, we're going to secure a lawyer, I believe Mark Bobrowski, and he's certified and an expert in 40B developments, if you would. So for the community, for all our residents, to say, all right, you know, we have a, we have a company building a 40B or going a 40B route, what's that look like for Tuxbury from A to Z, and how do we get plugged in from A to Z, and how do we present our business case and concerns so that they're fully documented and we don't feel we're left out as a community, and that's about it. So, do we have, do we have Mark, do we have Mark in present or?
Mark should be on the phone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mark Bobrowski on the phone, thank you.
All right, very good. And maybe if we can just turn it up a spec.
There you go.
Okay, Mark.
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Would you like me to give you a brief overview of the 40B process?
Yeah, I mean, I know I just, I said it a few times in this meeting, but do you understand, like, let's call it the gist of why we're looking forward to securing your services to help 30,000 residents understand the process and how we all get plugged in so that, you know, we're not scratching our heads five years from now and saying, oh, we should have thought of A, B, and C. So you kind of understand the, our, why we have you on the agenda, correct?
I believe so. So let me, let me give you a little bit of background. I've been a land use lawyer for 35 years, I wrote your zoning back in the 90s, I know somebody else has fixed it in the meantime. And I've also helped Tuxbury with at least five 40Bs, I'm scratching my head trying to remember all of them. I know that the Ames Pond project, the original version of it was on my watch. There's another smaller project out near Pleasant Pond called LA Associate. There was a project, I don't think it was ever built, but I did help the town at the Demoulis Warehouse location, and then there was another one or two along the way, including a very good project where we purchased the perpetual affordability for a 77-unit project whose affordability restriction had allegedly expired, but we worked out a deal and for short money, the town basically got to keep those 77 units on the subsidized housing inventory. I've probably done something on the order of 30 or 40 40Bs on the private side, and I've sat with boards across the state on probably 75 projects over the course of the last 20, 25 years. 40B is the state's primary way of building affordable housing. Many municipalities would like to zone for it, but until recently, that's mostly been a wish. So the process is pretty straightforward and simple. The applicant can go to a subsidizing agency, in this likely case, it's Mass Housing, but Mass Housing Partnership Fund and the Department of Housing and Community Development can also serve as subsidizing agencies. Once they get what's called a project eligibility letter from the subsidizing agency, they can come forward to the local ZBA and they can make an application for a comprehensive permit. The comprehensive permit law is just what it sounds like, it's a one-stop shopping approach to all local permits. So whereas the, the normal situation would be that you would need site plan approval from the planning board and a special permit perhaps, along with approval ultimately from the ZBA on some other zoning permit, all of that is wrapped into one, and the ZBA is in charge. They issue with the comprehensive permit at the end of, at the end of the process. It looks a lot like a normal zoning application, the issues are usually the same, traffic, noise, lights, neighborhood character, drainage, those are the big ticket items. But here, the law has built into it a presumption that if the municipality has not reached 10% in its goal for affordable housing, that is, 10% of the permanent year-round housing stock is subsidized and affordable, then the need for the housing presumptively outweighs local concerns. Local concerns being the kinds of issues that I just named. And that's a well-worn path at this point. The law was adopted in 1969, it's now 31 plus 21, 52 years later. And so municipalities generally understand what they can and can't do. The developer has the right to a reasonable return on investment, and the municipality generally has the right to enforce its local rules and regulations where those rules and regulations will not impede the financeability of the project. In the case of the project that's in front of you now, it'll be a rental project, and there are certain rules as to what return on total cost the developer is allowed to make, expected to make in order for the project to go forward. Generally speaking, under chapter 40B, it's been a long time since I've seen a denial, and that's because the law has a series of burdens of proof built into it. And if a municipality denies a 40B, then the applicant's only burden is to show that it meets federal and state health and safety standards, that's a pretty easy reach. So typically, projects are approved with conditions, and those conditions go into the mitigation details, everything ranging from landscaping, lighting, access improvements, water sewer improvements, all of that stuff is usually on the table. My role is typically to coordinate the peer review that the municipality will need, be it traffic, civil engineering, water sewer, and to negotiate on behalf of the municipality with the direction of Board of Selectmen and the ZBA in a direction that, that takes the project where you want it to go. And then at the end of the process, if and when, there's an appeal, and the developer alone has the right to. alone has the right to appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee, which is a special commission set up in Boston to hear developer appeals under 40B. I've litigated some 30 or 40 cases at the Housing Appeals Committee. I have a current matter in Superior Court in which I defended the town of Falmouth's approval with conditions of a project right in the south end of its downtown, and that's probably the last litigation I've done at the Housing Appeals Committee. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's a highly technical law, and not to the faint of heart, but as I said, the, those of us who work in the field know the road and, and can provide the map.
All right, thank you, Mark. That was a, that was a lot and quick. Where we are, has, has, do we know if the, if the applicant has filed with the state yet? And again, we're trying to get ahead of this, hence the meeting, why it's on the agenda. Do we know, Mr. Montori, if the client has filed yet?
I don't believe they filed at this point, but very shortly, they'll be filing with Mass Housing.
Okay, so, I'll open up to the board.
That will open up a 30-day window, and it can be extended for an additional 15 days if needed, in which the municipality puts all of its comments in front of Mass Housing so that Mass Housing can consider that before it issues the project eligibility letter. And I urge you to be prepared for that because that's an important first step in the process. For example, if you know that there's a particular bottleneck of traffic near the location, just as an example, you might want to call that for Mass Housing detention so that they can put instructions in the project eligibility approval that puts the applicant on notice they're going to have to fix that. Typically, what you would do is ask all of your boards to take a look at the comprehensive permit, project eligibility application, and have them return comments. And of course, if citizen groups want to make contributions in that regard, all of that should be reported to Mass Housing in your response letter.
Okay, so, just on the same page, and I promise I'll open up to the board. So, the, the process is, the Hanover Group would file with the Commonwealth. We, in turn, as a community, Tucksbury, we received their, let's call it their application, and then it's our turn to kind of plug in our wants, desires, needs in lieu of their application, and then we kind of start the negotiation. Is that, is that accurate?
No. What happens at this stage is that Mass Housing will look at everything. Mass Housing is a quasi-state agency. It's not, it's not a part of the government. But what they will do is consider the municipal response and then issue the project eligibility letter. I can only think of about a dozen in history that have been denied. And then, at that point in time, that's the ticket that the applicant can now take and punch at the ZBA desk to open up the public hearing process for the comprehensive permit. Without that project eligibility letter, they don't have access.
Okay, so, as a, so, I'm still confused. What's the bottom line? As a community, when do we get together, the residents and all the different boards to put together our, our, our needs or concerns for the project? When is when? Next week, 30 days, 60 days, as soon as possible?
When, when Mass Housing notifies you that they've received the application for the project eligibility letter, they will also tell you, you know, they'll give you a copy of it, and they'll tell you you have 30 days to respond.
Okay.
They'll give you 15 additional days in the meantime. But this, you know, this is kind of like a first blush look at it. It's not the definitive response of the municipality. That will come in the comprehensive permit decision itself. But you want to tell Mass Housing, you want, you want to tell Mass Housing early in the game that you might see an issue that they might not be aware of otherwise, and that you, Mass Housing, for example, will come out and take a sidewalk, and they send a representative out, and it's good to have your chief of police and fire there when the walk occurs so that any special concerns can be called out to Mass Housing, and all of that gets rolled into your response letter.
Okay. I will open up the board, two seconds, I promise, I promise. So, the bottom line is, it's in our best interest to get this going sooner than later. So, for instance, as a board, through the select board, we could put this, let's say, on the agenda for two weeks to get with yourself and the residents, both director butters and, and just residents, and start to have those meetings, just specific for this 40B. Would, does that sound like a reasonable plan?
Once you've got a copy of the project eligibility application, it does, because you, you gotta need, you need something to bounce off of, and once you get a copy of that, that's when you start the process.
Okay. And again, Mark, I know you're on our team. I'm just being aggressive for the residents. This is a very hot topic item for our community, so I thank you. So, I want to pause, and let's open up to the board. Again, this is the first time that we're securing, like I said, an expert, so this is, this is only the first of, of a lot of meetings, you know, in the next, you can only imagine 30, 60, 90 days for our community. So, I want to pause. How about Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just note that we've had occasion to collaborate with Mr. Attorney Babrowski, who has represented us in the past, and I've always found his work to be high-quality, so I feel very good that we might engage his services for this important topic. The other comment I'll offer is that if, if we don't do anything else well in town, and I would disagree with that comment, but one thing that we do very well under the leadership of our town manager and historically our assistant town manager, it's to coordinate the town department's response and concerns around every development that takes place, not just 40B. So, my expectation is that they will follow that same path that they historically execute to protect the town's interests overall and make sure that all the various departments have the input that's necessary for a project of this size. So, I'm assuming that will take place, and, and maybe one component of that also is, is the outreach that you referenced relative to neighbor or a butter resident input to, to blend that into that process. But we, I think we're well structured to address it, and having counsel guide us through the process. Our role is somewhat limited, as I understand it, because this is a ZBA topic, if the proponent follows the path that we're discussing here. But as a steward of the community, we need to make sure that all of the departmental concerns and residential concerns are addressed. So, I feel pretty good about the team that we've assembled, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Attorney Babrowski, for joining us this evening and giving us these highlights. I appreciate that. I'm sure we'll have more questions for you as we go. I know I will. I just had a couple of questions through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Montori and to Mr. Sadwick. What's our current, what's our current shortage as we know it so far? And what do we think it's going to be once the census comes in? On affordable units?
As of today, our numbers put us over 10% by, I think it's maybe 15 units at most. Looking and doing projections without the census data but using other proxies, I think we're going to be looking at a deficit of units, affordable units, around maybe 50 to 60 units.
50 to 60 units, okay.
So, once we get the 2020 census data, that's where we'll be behind.
And the projected date for the census data being released is like, what, mid-September?
Yeah, so, we actually started to receive census data this week.
Okay.
And we started looking at it today. Interesting enough, the only data that doesn't have housing units, has everything, you know, most everything else, population breakdown, things like that, so household income, but house, housing units is one item not on there yet. We've been told that probably September, so we're just waiting for that, just that piece to be filled in, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. And then, so then my next question is, are there any projects that are permitted in the pipeline for 50 to 60 units on the books already?
We need to have loud.
Oh, louder, please.
I'm not loud enough?
Very good, thank you.
Usually, I, you should talk to my kids. It's usually the opposite.
We couldn't get into the Sadwick's response.
I'll go back to that response.
Please.
So, currently, we're at, we're just over 10% of our total year-round housing stock. Projecting, looking at proxies, American Community Survey up until 2019, and building permits, I think that we're going to be short probably 50 to 60 affordable units when the 2020 census data finally hits us.
Okay. And so, my, my next question was, is there anything in the pipeline other than this potential project that Hanover is proposing?
So, there's the 21 units for the veterans' housing that was just approved by the planning board that needs to go through the process of filing for a local action unit that will then get us on the subsidized housing inventory.
Yeah.
And we have one other project, I think, that has seven units with it. But that project has taken quite a while to get off the ground and their financing and everything else, and we were working quite closely with them to try and get the filing, but they're, haven't even pulled building permits because some of the issues they've run into.
And my understanding is that housing doesn't, you can't count it in development until those permits are pulled. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, that, even if those, even if those are still going to happen, and, and I know the financing with the veterans' units, they still have a little bit of a journey ahead of them, it'd still be about 20 to 30 short in that, in that ballpark.
Probably.
And so, my question now is for Attorney Babrowski. Is there any latitude that's granted to municipalities for 40B housing at the beginning of census data, when these numbers flip? So that there's sort of like, there's a pipeline, things are happening, or is that just a really good opportunity for a developer?
I think it's more the latter than the former. Forever, in my experience, the 10% number is, it's not horseshoes. You're either there or you're not.
Right.
So, municipalities that are even just under are vulnerable to large, larger projects. There's one ancient case from Greenfield back maybe in the late 80s or early 90s in which there was a project that took them over 10% by not more than 15 or 20 units. And the, the town of Greenfield, now the city of Greenfield sued claiming that they weren't responsible for an overage, if you want to call it that, and it went all the way to the appeals court. It might have gone to the Supreme Judicial Court, I can't remember. But the long and short of it is that the SJC or the appeals court said, look, if, if we can, there was actually a footnote in the case where the lawyer argued, you know, what, what would happen if we were 200 over instead of 16 over? And the court said, well, you're not. So, we don't have to answer that question now, and there's never been an answer to that question in the years since then. But clearly, a project that takes you over in principle is not wrongful because, simply because you went over.
Right.
The degree of overage is not a question, to my knowledge, that's been litigated since the Greenfield case.
Okay, so, and just to be, just to be clear, this, the Hanover project is the last, I heard, how many units? 364? Or has that changed?
They're 300 right now.
300 right now? Okay. All right. I have no further questions at this time, but I'm sure I'll have more later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Remember, this is just the beginning, you know what I mean, of the whole process, and seems like we're a little bit ahead of the game. So, how about Ms. Astronik?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to agree with Mr. Johnson, and thank you for being here with us and for your services. I think you have served the town well in my recollection, working with you. My questions were asked by Ms. Miller, I'm sorry, I'm having a terrible time with my voice tonight, by Ms. Wellman. And the one thing that I would ask is, if we were to appeal this, typically, how much does an appeal cost the town? What is the range of what an appeal would cost the town?
Well, the, the question is more framed if the developer were to appeal this.
Thank you.
And the developer, the developer has the right, as I said, to go to the Housing Appeals Committee. No one else does. It's a special forum set up for developer appeals. So, typically, that's what it boils down to in the usual case. As I said, it's been years since there's been a denial that I can remember. The typical case is the developer says, look, you've got 106 conditions, and the following conditions are interference with subsidizing agency's jurisdiction. And then there's a list. And then the next, third, the next part of it is, these conditions are disparate treatment because you don't do this for other projects, but you did impose these conditions on me. That's a list. And then the third part is, these conditions render the project individually or in the aggregate uneconomic, and we want these conditions removed as well. So, that's a typical appeal by a developer. It usually is in those three parts, and it's then entrenched warfare because each condition is battled individually and in the aggregate. You're going to be arguing that your disparate treatment is, is in fact not true, that you treat subsidized and unsubsidized projects alike. The, the usual arguments about programmatic issues are resolved based on the holding in a Supreme Judicial Court case involving the town of Amesbury. And then, the real guts of an appeal usually are on the economic issues. And there's, you know, it's, it's, it's very complicated evidence where a financial expert on 40B testifies for the developer and a financial expert on 40B testifies for you, and the court has to reach questions of credibility in terms of making up its mind. So, it's a very, it's a complicated process to go all the way through an HAC appeal. The HAC appeal hearings typically last, if it's a full-blown appeal, they typically last three or four days. I know my Falmouth case was three or four days of hearing in front of the Housing Appeals Committee Chairwoman. So, you know, it's, it's litigation.
And...
The thing to do, the, the thing to do is to try to reach an accommodation where there's an agreement buying between you and the developer that they've taken a little bit of a hit, and you've taken a little bit of a hit, and at the end of the day, you can live with it, both sides, and that avoids the appeal.
Thank you. So, I guess that was going to lead into my next question. While they are not doing a LIP when we go through this process of the project eligibility, we can say these are some things that we would like to have, and then when we go through the ZBA, we can then also request things on behalf of the town. We have a little less leverage, is that correct, when they go through the state, but we still have the ability? Is that right?
The LIP process requires the signature of the Board of Selectmen on the application to DHPD, which serves as the subsidizing agency. And the fiction in a LIP project is that the subsidy is the in-kind contributions of the state agency and the local Board of Selectmen. Remember, you need a subsidy for these projects. There is some leverage there for the municipality because the LIP endorsement can be withheld or withdrawn if the applicant doesn't play ball. So, the applicant makes the decision whether they want to pursue the LIP or they want to pursue Mass Housing or Mass Housing Partnership Fund early in the game. If they go through Mass Housing, you don't have that leverage. You're basically in a position where you're negotiating, but you don't have the power to withdraw your endorsement, which is a really crucial thing.
That's the, what I wanted, the crux of the, and let residents know that we, that leverage is, no longer sits with the town. And the ability for them to go to Mass Housing and request this is, as you just stated, pretty much a done deal because it is now in the state's interest for the affordable housing. Is that correct?
Pretty much. I mean, as I said, I don't, having been doing, I've done this a long time. I don't know of more than a dozen Mass Housing rejections of project eligibility applications. There, there may be, but I just don't know of them. I myself have probably been involved in three or four rejections of project eligibility applications. It takes a lot in order for Mass Housing to say no to a project eligibility application.
Thank you. And then, lastly, I would just do you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager and the assistant town manager. First of all, I appreciate you coordinating this with the, not only the town department heads, but the other boards in town, and putting them on notice. heads, but the other boards in town, and putting them on notice that this will be coming pretty soon in the event that we have to schedule additional meetings so that we are prepared for that eligibility letter, and specifically, local housing, planning, ZBA. And then obviously, I think the Board of Health is going to need to be in on that as well. But anybody, so just, it would be good to put them on notice, their chairs. So that's all, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll do a plus-one, too, perhaps the planning board and the chair.
Yeah, I think that's the school committee.
And all of the above, department heads and all boards, you know, for everyone to have a kind of a say and a piece. So I'll just go quickly. Mark, as far as, I understand the rejection, it's a 90%, 90% approval rate, so the likelihood, listen, it's gonna, it's gonna pass, but how many negotiations in your, you know, 25, 30-plus years, negotiations, just like the community negotiating with Hanover, what's the percentage of, if we have 10, 20, 30, 40 things from our community, just ballpark estimate? How willing typically are the developers willing to work with the community for negotiations?
I think my experience on the development side helps me to answer that question. Most developers I work with have a mitigation budget, and they are prepared, knowing that there is not going to be a parade for them at the outset, they are prepared to try to do something that will help soften the blow to the municipality. How much and how, you know, and of what importance that mitigation is, is a matter that can be worked out. But I'm, you know, mine, I helped the town of Winchester, for example, with a project on the Woburn Line. There was a shopping mall on Route 3 across a divided highway, basically, a short little stretch of divided highway, and nobody from Winchester could get to the shopping mall without crossing an enormous unsafe road. So the developer didn't need to do this, but he stepped up to the plate and arranged for pedestrian crossing there with a flashing yellow light. That's the kind of thing that a good developer will take into account and try to accomplish for the municipality.
Okay. And with the ZBA, I know it's going to go in front of the ZBA, ultimately, they're going to be the approving body, if you would, for the residents? Would the ZBA take into consideration of all of our input from the different boards, department heads, and residents alike, to kind of, let's just say, I'm going to use a tough word, fight on behalf of the community? Would that be, is that a fair assessment?
Yes. For example, frequently, the matter involves border health regulations or locally adopted wetlands bylaw. The Conservation Commission obviously is the administrator of that. The Board of Health does the, does the health-oriented regulation. So anything, the developer has the power to ask for a waiver from any local regulations, arguably because it renders the project uneconomic. And it's always incumbent upon the ZBA to send a letter to those boards asking what that board thinks. Now, the ZBA has the, has the power to make the final decision, but I, it certainly should involve input from those boards along the road.
Okay. And last but not least, what's the magic number? We've heard all different numbers, like, for instance, if Hanover gets, right now, whatever it is, 300, what's the magic number? Or does it, based on number of bedrooms per unit, whether it's 800 square feet or 1,200 square feet? What's the number out of that total number that would, would go to affordable housing units? Would it be, I'm just using numbers now, if they dropped it down to 275, would it be 275 units literally count on behalf of affordable?
Well, I jumped the gun there. The quota for the affordable housing is always, at a minimum, 25%. So 25% of the units are affordable. And the affordable units represent the breakout of studios, ones, twos, and threes. In a 40B, it is required that 10% of the units be three-bedroom, that's a state regulation, and it never gets waived, especially on a large project. So, for example, 50% of the units are two-bedroom, 50% of the affordables are two-bedroom. At the end of the day, in a project like this, all of the units will count towards the town's SHI number, subsidized housing inventory number. So if it's a 300-unit project and 300 units are approved, it's 300 units on your SHI. And as Steve and I were talking earlier today, that would put Tewksbury, you know, well into the 2030 period of time before 40B became an issue, if ever again.
Okay. All right. Well, listen, this is what I'd like to do, because I love the fact that Mr. Johnson recognized it on the July 11 meeting, this is, this is what the communities are supposed to do, come out, you know, and have questions and what have you. So at this point, I'd like to keep it brief, but since we have, Mark, Mr. O'Brien, I did not look at you, you're good. But what I'd like to do is maybe just, let's come, you know, Mark's a friendly, he's on our side, so maybe have some quick hitters for Mark, just to get his gears going, and we might not be part of the equation, this particular board, but I do believe, you know, I'll speak on behalf of the board, I'm going to initiate meetings in the very near future to kind of quarterback this, you know, through the board, I think that's our obligation. So with that being said, I'm going to break the rules, and if someone has some quick hitters for Mark, why don't we bring, why don't we bring those up at this time? So, with any residents, like the kind of bounce questions or whether it's off the hook, please. And you know the drill, just name a number for the record, please.
Bob O'Brien, 110 Cardigan Road. Quick question when the attorney comes on board. Will you be meeting with the abuddies or the, do the abuddies have an opportunity to direct questions to you? As I'm looking at the audio screen. Do the abuddies have the opportunity to direct inquiries? Do the attorney, or do we have to go through some of the forum? Since the town is paying it with tax money, I think the abuddies...
We're good. Mr. Montori?
If I can just jump in on that.
Please.
Absolutely, you can ask questions of the attorney, but everything should go through my office, through Steve, and we'll direct them to the attorney and get you answers.
Okay.
The residents will not have direct access to the attorney.
And I think that makes sense, and we call them, I tell you, sometimes there's good backyard meetings, but to keep everything consistent, you know what I mean, the communication, that's perfect, that we have, we'll go through a single channel, that'll be Mr. Montori, and I'm sure Steve will be good.
So he'd be the conduit for any questions they have, that's fine.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you. What is the time you get this attorney coming on board? Once they hand over officially files, or is he on the clock now?
Mr. Montori.
Sure. I intend to have the board approve the agreement for the attorney tonight, and he'll be on board tomorrow.
And did you mention you principally get involved with some of the key infrastructure issues like traffic, water, sewer? Is that your main role, public safety? Or do you get involved in the whole package of 40B representing or supporting the town?
Well, I, I'm soup to nuts. So my job is to choreograph the peer reviewers that you will need in order to take a look at this application. And you do that. Anyway, I recently represented the, the proponent of the Tewksbury Hospitality Hotel, and I met Sam Gregorio, who was your peer review traffic engineer, and he actually testified at the trial that we had on the issue. So you're, you're well accustomed to working with very good peer reviewers, traffic, civil, and anything else that you need here going forward. Those are the people that have the expertise. I'm a lawyer, and I depend on those experts in order to help make the case, one way or the other.
Okay, thank you. The CONCOM, is the CONCOM bypassing this process? Are they still involved with the, with the 40B?
310 CMR-10, which is the state regulations for wetlands, are still intact, and the CONCOM has jurisdiction over that, so they are certainly going to play a role in that regard. If, and I think Tewksbury does have a local wetlands bylaw, the local wetlands bylaw is in the province of the Zoning Board of Appeals. But if waivers, you know, it's enforceable. If the developer comes forward and says, look, I can't comply with the 50-foot no-touch, just as an example, then they'll seek a waiver. The Board of Appeals should reach out to the CONCOM and say, tell me why or why not a waiver should or should not be granted here. And then the Board of Appeals will take that into consideration in addressing the concern of the applicant.
Now, what about the DEP? Do they get involved at all? Are they only get involved when the CONCOM calls them in for assistance? How does that work?
Well, as I said, the CONCOM is still going to do its usual job under the state regulations, 310 CMR-10. So if there's an appeal of an order of conditions or a denial of an order of conditions, then it goes, superseding order will go to the regional office of the DEP, just like it would in any other case.
Because...
Normally, it's an interesting thing to look at, you know, for example, I had a case in Canton many years ago where I represented the town. My engineer said, this doesn't apply with the DEP stormwater management policy, and it can't, because here's the reasons why. And we defended our decision to mitigate on that basis. And the Housing Appeals Committee ruled that the Housing Appeals Committee is not going to get into the science of a DEP permit. So if it's a matter of stormwater and compliance with DEP stormwater management regulations, DEP decides that. If it's groundwater discharge permit, it's not for us at the local level to decide whether or not DEP would or would not issue that permit, it's for DEP to decide that. And of course, there are appeals that can be made to the DEP action if the groundwater discharge permit, for example, is approved or denied, but it's not a ZBA jurisdictional matter.
Because this developer, this same developer was fined and failed heavily on another apartment complex they built on the other side of the pond, so I don't know if there's any, you know, it's baseball season, and one strike, you're out, so. Okay, one other question. Can the permit, Hanover's about to submit a permit at some point in the near future, can the permit be paused or delayed because of all the lack of definite information on the 2020 census? You hear different stories about, you know, the census numbers are potentially inaccurate right now, the number of housing units aren't going to be out till December or January, so how can, how can the 40B administration, mass housing?
That's a good question.
Mass housing approve?
The general...
Approve a situation without, without all these indefinite numbers for housing units, population, and things like that, so. What is your take on that? That's my last question.
Well, the track record here is pretty clear, that going after mass housing for internal subsidy agency decisions is not going to be rewarded by the court. That's been tried many times by foes of Chapter 40B in the last 20 years, and virtually every case has ended with the subsidy agency brushing the dust off and standing tall at the end of the day. So those internal decisions of the subsidizing agency are not part of the normal appeal process. It's a good question. I mean, if they're going to write a project eligibility letter and they don't know what the overage, to use my term again, will be, I mean, I guess my first question would be, does it matter? Does mass housing really care that there's going to be a considerable overage, and would that in any way shape their decision? I don't know that they've ever been in that position before. But there's, I mean, I did some research about a year ago, nine months ago, and I went through all the towns that were just over 10%, of which there were probably 30 or 40. And, you know, those are the towns that are, that were popular enough to be over 10% and vulnerable enough now to probably be under 10%. So there is a, there is some, some skin in the game for a lot of communities.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Very good questions. And again, we're going to have the opportunity to, to come back together as a community through this board and start putting, what's the saying, pen to paper? So, but at this time, any other questions, top of mind, please? And you know the drill, just name and address for the record, please.
Craig Spedely, 140 Cardigan Room.
Sure.
The piece of property, Ames Pond, is over 30 acres of land, I believe, and I think the developer of the presentation we saw was developing approximately 10 acres. Does the owner have the ability to develop in the future on the rest of the property? Or where they're using the acreage to, in their calculations, is it already spoken for, I guess, as, as a 40B development at that point?
It will literally depend on the town's relative position to 10% and the developer's representations in terms of the project area, the, you know, they have to, if the developer has control of the site and there's more land left over, they can come in for a phase now and come in for a phase later, but under the circumstances with Tewksbury hanging just over 10% and then coming in with a fairly large application, I think once, you know, if Tewksbury remains over, as long as Tewksbury remains over 10%, the town has the ability to just reside in safe harbor. They don't have to take anything they don't want to take. But that needs to be made clear. If you're over 10%, you're in a safe harbor. And that safe harbor for 10% accomplishment is the biggest harbor there is, because you don't have to take anything. You can take it if you want, but you don't have to take anything until you come back under 10%.
Understood. So 40B aside, I'm assuming that per your remarks, they could, they could build something that is by right for the zone of the property as it exists today, correct?
Yeah, under the zoning, correct, right.
In addition, okay. One...
Please, please, please.
I heard September possibly on the census numbers, and I'm just curious if the town has, gets that information prior to the public getting it, because I know on the census website, it says 2022 for a release schedule.
Mr. Sawick?
Yeah. I'm only going based on outreach that I made to the state, probably, it may have been back in June, asking that question, and they said that they were expecting it in September, October, so that's, that's where I'm coming up with, with that date.
And, Mr. Chairman, we don't get any special advance notice. Actually, we saw it in the newspaper like everyone else.
Welcome to the state of Massachusetts. All right, I digress. Okay.
The reason why I bring that up is, if we're entertaining this, and we're at 10% already, I would think that we should do the due diligence with the contractor in this case to really show us where the benefits of Tewksbury is. We know the benefit to him, but with the benefits of Tewksbury, as we talked about at previous meetings, it's not the tax revenue, so, thank you.
Good call, thank you. Good stuff. Any other residents at this time? And just name a number for the record.
John Stanton, 130 Cardigan Road. Mark, I understand there's two other, I'm looking that way, too. There's two other safe harbors based on land percentages. Have those ever come into play in the past in your experience?
There are some towns that have made a run at trying to get approval for that. I understand that the town of Norwood, in a settlement, reached its goal. There have been probably about a half a dozen cases, Stonem, Newton's had a couple of different cases in which there have been arguments that the town has reached its land, its general land area minimum, it's called a GLAM case, and they've generally proven not to be terribly successful. There is a guidance document that DHPD has put out for how to compute the land area, but when you, when you come right down to it, it's, if there are more than Norwood right now that have reached their GLAM harbor, safe harbor, there are only one or two other ones.
I was thinking of that third one that's based on the size of the individual projects. There can only be 0.3 of 1% of the buildable land in the town? That also never comes into play?
I don't know of any municipality that's reached that safe harbor. The other safe harbors would be for large projects, and there's also for housing production, but you're sort of beyond that now that you're over 10%.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
It's important to note that denominator will not change again until the next census. So while you're waiting for the 2020 census results, you will, once you get them, they're frozen in place, the denominator, the number of year-round housing units, which is the denominator, will be frozen in place until 2020. All new construction between 2020 and 2030 will not come into play until 2030 census.
Okay, very good. Any additional residents at this time?
My name is Robert Bolt, I live at 97 Cardigan Road. This question for Mark. The economic issues you said were basically what was the most contentious... The economic issues you said were basically what was the most contentious and most decisive in these matters historically. What is the reasonable rate of return that tends to be acceptable for a project?
Well, right now, the benchmark, as it's called in a rental project, is the 10-year treasury, which is about 1.2, I think, as of this week, plus 450 basis points. So the return on total cost in the application, which is snapshot in the gas, has to be in the range of, that would be about 5.7% return on total cost. And anything below that is presumptively uneconomic. Now, developers come in all the time below the benchmark, and they may have their own long-term reasons for doing that. And if they do come in below the benchmark, that, that becomes their new benchmark, if you will. So if the developer comes in at 4.1 ROTC, that's their benchmark going forward. But remember that anything a municipality does to reduce that even further makes the project even more uneconomic. So there's a very, it's a tight walk, a tightrope walk for the municipality to try to be reasonable but effective at the same time.
I think that's all I have at this point.
Thank you, thank you. You know, we covered a lot. Any other residents? We're probably going to close it up in a little bit. Any other residents at this time? Okay, see, and again, you see our commitment here to open the microphone, to be open. I hate the word transparent, I like the word honesty, and this is the way the board operates. So we're going to continue discussions, we'll keep you all on the loop, and thank you very much for coming out, that means a lot. Thank you for caring. So thank you. Mark, thank you very much, and we'll talk soon. Oh, Mr. Sawick?
That's okay. We're good.
Okay. And Mr. Montori, do we need to take a vote to secure?
Sure. If the, if the board could vote to authorize me to enter, enter into a, an agreement to hire Attorney Bobowski as special counsel on this project, that'd be great.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, Janice. Thanks again, Mark, and we'll talk soon. Thanks again to the residents for coming out, thank you.
Looking forward to it, Mr. Chairman, board members, hope to talk to you soon. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. Awesome. Okay, why don't we, anyone want to take a break, or you want to push through?
Keep moving.
All right, Mr. Montori, the floor, actually, well, let's just, some folks might clear out, so just get, let's give it 10 seconds. Thanks again for all coming out, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, or Dan, that's, that's what I was trying to get at, because remember when we did the, the one on South Street, we were talking about that, and everybody was like freaking out, and I was like, guys, if we do this, we're like taking on the state. I was trying, I didn't ask the question correctly.
This is your signature, please.
That's where I was going with it.
But I think we all have them.
You knew where I was going with it. I think it's important for residents to know that. And so if ZBA, if ZBA goes in front of it and then they say, like, give them a bunch of crap, then they're going to just go to the appeal and say, and if we lose there, then we take on, right. That's, I know. That's where I was trying to figure that out.
We good to go? We're live?
All right. So I wasn't, I was right.
Okay, we're going to move on to?
We got to get that out. What, for people to understand that, if it loses that ZBA.
All right, we're live, and maybe, let's table that. So what we're going to do is, and I want to thank the board, listen, we kind of broke the rules there, but you see how it was important to the residents, so thank you for allowing the public hearing. I know it just took a little bit, but I think it was well worth it to educate the residents. So thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, with that being said, Mr. Montori, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick update on public meetings. As everyone knows, there's been a rise in case numbers in COVID, there's been a concern regarding the spread of the Delta variant, how it's going to affect us going forward. All of our public meetings will continue to be in person, there hasn't been any change to that. The one change we will be making, right now, we have allowed residents to participate virtually, and that has been a very labor-intensive for the telemedia staff. It requires two of them to be at every public meeting that's televised, and that includes the Selectmen Planning Board, School Conservation Commission, ZBA, and Board of Health. With the fall coming up and the need to continue to broadcast the excellent programs that the library runs, sporting events in the fall, so residents who can't get to sporting events, whether work commitments, childcare commitments, COVID, we want to continue to broadcast those because we have learned that those are the most watched and most popular shows and events that we do. It's going to really run the staff thin, so I've reached out to the chairmans of the other committees who are on, who are being filmed. There has not been much public participation virtually. Anybody that's wanted to participate in a meeting has felt comfortable coming to the meetings. We have done everything we can to ensure that we provide a safe environment for people to meet. If we have larger groups that can fit in this venue, we can go to a larger one. So the plan is in September to stop the virtual component for residents to participate. We'll still maintain a virtual component for members of committees, members of any of the public bodies who can't make a meeting to participate, but the public portion will end, and we just have not had that much participation. And I know we're seeing an increase in cases, I know the issue with the, the Delta variant, but I believe we'll be able to provide a safe environment for public meetings to continue in person, for people to come here live.
Okay. I know this was important, so why don't we thank you, Mr. Montori, for the updates. Questions, comments from the board? Just Stronik, please.
I just want to thank the telemedia department for doing that, and I also think that it is a good avenue for us to go down, given the fact that it has not been utilized to the potential that we thought originally was going to have that participation. And I would just like to say that, as the town manager and his department heads always do, I know that you're going to continue to keep an eye on this, and if the need changes, we can be flexible.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll adjust accordingly down the road if we need to. We're set up to do it in this meeting room, the meeting room, smaller meeting room down the hall. If there's a public hearing that we think needs to include it, we can always adjust that way too, for whatever reason. It's just to do it every single meeting, because, for instance, the Board of Selectmen doesn't have public hearings all the time, so the need is less. So if there's a public hearing that the chairman of that committee thinks it'd be wise to do it, then we'll do it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Very good. Any other questions, comments from the board?
No, just to echo Mrs. Stronik's comments, that, and gratitude to our telemedia department for all the work that they've done since March 2020 to deliver public meetings to our residents safely. So, and I appreciate the comments that, that the manager made, that should things change, we can be flexible as needed. So thank you. And I appreciate them coming up with a hybrid solution in the short term, as we're all kind of, you know, building the, the plane while we're flying it when it comes to this pandemic, so, thank you very much.
Very good. All right, very good. We'll move on, Mr. Montori, I think you have a couple more items here?
I do, very quickly, I just want to pass out, the board has seen these, these are the articles that were drafted to change the, the name of Board of Selectmen to Select Board. These change, there are three articles to change the name Select Board, Selectmen to Select Board in the charter. So an article will be to petition the state legislature for a home rule petition. The second article will be to change the term in the general bylaws, and the third article is to change the term in the zoning bylaws. This has been reviewed by town council, everything looks good. If the board, and this is something the board had asked me to look into and draft, if the board is comfortable and approves it, I will make it as part of the warrant submission that articles are due this Friday.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, let's, thank you, Mr. Montori. And just for the residents, it was brought up on the agenda item, so your homework assignment was to kind of see what, what is the process to go ahead and essentially change the name to the Board of Selectmen, to the Select Board. I think we all call it the Select Board now, just sometimes by tripping, however, but I do want to open it up to the board for discussion, I have them to discuss, so, Mr. Johnson, any discussion?
No, I support putting this before the town meeting attendees to make their decision.
Okay, very good. Ms. Stronik?
I would agree with that, and I'm looking forward to hearing what they have to say.
Okay. And Ms. Wellman, out of respect?
Oh, I, I appreciate the manager taking the time with staff and council to draft these, these articles and with this language. I think it's, it's very good to bring it before the community and let them vote.
Okay. And just for me, it's like I said, oftentimes I call it the Select Board by default now, you know, so I don't, again, I'm going to reserve my right for my opinion, I just feel sometimes like, again, this is why we have five members on the board, is we, we all think differently we're supposed to when we get elected. For me personally, I always say, I just don't think, again, this is just me speaking, that I should be the moral compass, the king of this community, you know, to say what we should not do when it comes to naming and proclamations, that's just me. That's just me. So I think this is another one where, you know, I think we should take a vote, I think, you know where we're going. So I don't mind it being an article, but I do think some folks, you know, some residents might scratch their head and saying, the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board, whatever, is pushing this on us. And I know we have different opinions where we, as a board, put articles in front of residents so that they can make a decision. I totally get that. But just for me, like I said, I think this one is, for some of the folks that may not pay attention, that elect us to make decisions on their behalf, it could look like, well, again, look what the board's doing, because, believe it or not, during one of our last meetings, this was a little hot button, you know, a little hot button saying, here we go, or here they go, you know, changing A, changing B, what's next? So I just, again, I wanted to share that with the board, this is my opinion. So I guess my only comment would be, would this, if you put this through, this would appear to come from the town manager or come from the Select, Board of Selectmen, Mr. Montori, if we were to put this through?
Could go either way. I could submit it if the board is comfortable with that, either way. If you, if the board authorizes tonight, it would come from the board.
Okay. All the other thing, and I don't think it's semantics, I'm not sure, you know, if it comes from us or come from the town manager, if that's different or not different, but I, any other discussion from the board? I just wanted to share that, share my feedback, where, again, it's just like, you know, where, I just don't think, I think personally that I shouldn't, you know, say, this is what we should or shouldn't do on behalf of 30,000 residents, when it comes to these particular items. Again, that's just my opinion. So I don't know if the board, any other, you know, comments or discussion around that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll offer two comments. The first is, this is, these three proposed article changes refer to the board that we serve on.
Okay.
And I believe that we should sponsor the article, it is our board, not the town manager's board. And that does not mean that at this current moment, I'm taking a position on it, only that if we're going to present the articles, they should be sponsored by this board. It affects this board directly. And the second comment I'd offer is just to remind residents that they have worked hard over many years, they have supported, maintained support for, and advocated for the continuance of a town meeting form of government here in our community. And that means that they have the word on an article like this, not us. So if people have concerns, or to your description, if people think it's going too far, then they should show up and vote against it. We're not voting for it or against it here at this table, we're putting it on a warrant potentially to give them the choice. Nothing more and nothing less.
No, great points, and I think, I understand that, but, you know, sometimes it's very important to educate residents how it goes, because for a, for a resident that may not be deeply involved, you know, in, 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 let's say, politics in the town, it could absolutely, just getting the feedback, and absolute, again, but, but points very, very well valid, that's why I wanted to have discussion.
Don't stay home if you care about it.
Okay, thank you.
Show up and be heard.
Ms. Stronik?
I appreciate both of your comments very much, and for me, when I read the warrant, whether it says the town manager or the Board of Selectmen, I think they're interchangeable.
Sure.
That's me, and that's how I read my warrant. So again, I am a strong proponent of town meeting. I think it is better to have the townspeople, as many of them that show up, is better than the five of us making that decision. But I think that this is the town's decision. I have my own personal views on that, that I will express at town meeting as a resident.
Okay, thank you, fair enough. That's why I wanted to have the open discussion. Okay, so.
Appreciate that. It's good to talk.
And any other discussion, or do we have to, Mr. Montori, are we looking for?
Better put it on the.
Are we looking for a vote from the, from the board to put it on or not on?
Yeah.
Yes, I wouldn't put it on without the, I wouldn't put it on without the board's vote.
Okay. And Mr. Johnson made a super, super good point, it is, it should come through the board if it does, so very good, thank you.
It's just my opinion. I'm a motherfucker.
It's, it's a logical one, very logical one. So I guess, you know, so I guess, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen put forth these three articles on the warrant for special town meeting in October.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. So the motion carries three to one. Okay, perfect. All right, what do you got, Mr. Montori?
Last item is a town council invoice in the amount of $3,357.50 for July 1st through July 15th. I'd ask the board to approve it.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries four oh. Anything else, Mr. Montori?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, as usual. Great job, thank you. That brings us to, so we do have some minutes listed here, but I'm going to pass it to Ms. Stronik. So Ms. Stronik, I think we're going to put these on hold temporarily?
So the interesting thing about the minutes this time is it actually spans three separate clerks. And we have had some difficulty in some transitions through our minutes, and we have been looking very diligently to get someone to fill that role and responsibility we have. I'm going to give it to Ms. Wellman, who's going to take care of the 19 to 2019.
Yep. So thank you, Mrs. Stronik, yes. I would say transitions have been challenging, correct? And so we are, we are here tonight to approve some previous minutes, and we have a bit of a backlog, and those are, we have a few more that are still coming. I do want to thank the town manager's office, and, and the recording secretaries that we've worked with for their work bringing these forward over time. So I would make, I'd like to make a motion for the approval, I'm going to take these pretty quickly, but one at a time, unless, can I approve them all at once? These backlog ones, why don't we just, I'll read the dates for the sessions that I'm going to bring forward to you. June 13, 2019. So making motion for the approval of the following minutes by this board. June 13, 2019, July 1, 2019, August 13, 2019, February 11, 2020, March 20, 2020, June 11, 2020, all regular sessions.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Epstein.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion carries three zero one. Thank you, Ms. Wellman, and Ms. Stronik for working together, thank you.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table the following. to table the following minutes. And they are the September 15th, I'm sorry. Yeah, September 15th, 2020, November 17th, 2020, and February 9th, 2021. In James's absence, because he is not here to present the 28th, I would add that one as well.
Makes sense. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the motion carries four to nil.
And as we, just one more comment, please, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
As we run through these, I will tell you that there is a little bit of no rhyme to reason how we're getting these done. So we're going to see some of us bumping back and forth because we wanted to get the last minutes caught up first. So we're working backwards.
Not bad. We took a good chunk out, and we have a little bit of work to do. So thank you very much for focusing on these, on the minute notes. Because we all know, even in this chair, we click on them from years ago. So they are very important, and we always do a search. We usually call upon them. So thanks for doing due diligence. It's very important.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of inquiry to my colleagues. Can someone enlighten me as to what the backlog is? When I left the board a few years ago, we were pretty current. So I'm just curious how many meetings we are now behind.
I will, I actually can tell you that.
I saw Mr. Montori roll his eyes. That's never a good sign.
What I would tell you was that the recording secretary had left, and then we had much difficulty finding a new person. The new person has just come onboard. She is doing them virtually, and it has taken us some time. And unfortunately, some of the information, which you may have noticed in your packet, is not, it's taken a little bit more work to go back to the meetings to make sure that the minutes are accurate. So it's more about making sure that they're appropriately put forward. But right now, we're probably backlogged. I think 2019 is now caught up, and we're backlogged to that September 15th and forward.
And just to follow up on that, the previous recording secretary had fallen behind for a variety of reasons. And then she decided to leave without being caught up. She said she was going to catch up, wasn't able to catch up. Then we brought someone on finally, that, because it took a while to find them. She's working away from most recent backwards to catch up. She's also supposed to be doing the findings committee, too. So it's, finding a recording secretary has been difficult. If anybody else wants to do it, we're looking, we could use some extra help.
Right.
But the previous person just didn't catch up. As she said, handed over her notes because we finally said, just give us what you have. We're going to figure it out.
Okay.
And the other thing is, I worked on the executive committee meetings because I thought that those were important because of negotiations. So that was the first priority. But most of them fall within the year that I was clerk.
No, it's always been a challenge. I appreciate that. I just wanted to know the gravity of the situation. Thank you.
We're getting there.
Okay.
Okay, last but not least, board member reports. How about Ms. Wellman?
Really briefly, we're meeting, NIMCOG's meeting tomorrow night. I did talk recently with the director of the LRTA. I had a very nice conversation with him about Tewksbury and bus service in town. There'll be more on that to come with some routing and ridership issues as they start to, as volumes start to increase. We have an executive search committee for the new director of NIMCOG. She's leaving, Beverly is leaving in December. So I'm on that committee, and we're getting ready to issue the job descriptions and the advertising. I expect that we will start meeting with the bylaw committee and the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee in September. So, and I'll be reaching out to those bodies to organize our first meetings for the diversity, equity, inclusion. And Mr. Johnson and I will be working to bring the bylaw committee together in the next month. And school is getting ready to start. And so it's a really challenging time right now. And I give my colleagues in education, on all forms of education, applause and support as needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you. The local housing partnership was going to be meeting, and we canceled that meeting because Hannover is not going to be coming forward with a lip. We will be regrouping as we get ready for the next phase of that project. And the Tewksbury Elementary Building Committee meeting was canceled last Thursday because we did not have a quorum. We are meeting this Thursday. Project is going forward and really well underway. We continue to meet with the Butters, and I want to thank the town manager and the project manager for that. I want to note that our next meeting, which is on September 14th, by that time, we will have played our first game at the football field, which is scheduled for September 11th. We will not be having an opening event for that because obviously the school project is the centerpiece. And so we will be working with the school for that. But that will be up and running. So I know that I'm pretty excited about that piece of it. And the, so that's Thursday for the elementary building at 6:00. And then the events committee is meeting at 7:00 on Thursday night as well. And really getting well underway for the Fall Festival at the end of September, which is going to have a little bit of a different flavor. I don't know if any of you have been to the farmer's market, but it's going to be more on the lines of something like that and family-oriented. Lots of great participation from community people and a great venue of food trucks, which is pretty popular right now. So looking forward to that. And just want to thank everybody for their work on that. And I, too, echo that schools will be opening. So be careful driving around.